We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Select Board's rules of procedure are adopted annually to ensure a productive meeting. The Select Board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment, but the purpose of the meeting is for the Board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the Chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for comment from any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedure are posted in the Town Hall and available for everyone to review.
Alright, so I've gotten everybody signed in. Okay, this is here too. And we have Mike, Jessica, Tom, and Rich here, and I'm Kristen, and this is our microphone, so if you're talking tonight, you'll have to talk into this for PEG TV. Just remember to talk into it, not with it. So, it's a tool, not an accessory. We have, so I sent out an updated agenda this morning. Two prerequested, Deb and Ed Evans are here, and then Lenny Gibson also, under prerequested. And then, there's an ordinance review under older unfinished business. Julie sent out an email about that. And then, earlier today, there was a request to add an executive session to discuss confidential attorney-client communications made for providing professional legal services to the body. So those are the updates to the agenda. Did anybody else have anything? No? So the minutes that need approval are from our last meeting, which was October 28th.
I'll move to approve those minutes.
Okay, thanks.
I'll second those.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posted. Carried. Prerequested. Deb and Ed?
Ed.
Ed.
Thank you.
That was a quick finger point.
Forty-five years of that.
He's louder than me.
So I supplied you with some talking points here, but members of the community have expressed a desire to have a holiday tree with decorations temporarily placed in the green to celebrate the holiday season in Palm. A twenty-foot tree has been graciously donated to by the Ross Farm in memory of Jim Ross to this effort, and will be harvested on Thanksgiving weekend. An eight-by-eight-foot steel ballast mound has been manufactured by Chris Ross that will readily support the tree. The tree will be raised and set in place by Johnny Haynes with his bucket truck, and Johnny will also use bucket truck to decorate the tree. I did a risk assessment on this request. Power consumption, now, we're gonna decorate the tree with LED lights. We're looking at about 210 watts of use for the LED lights. The GFCI outlet out in the green is 20 operated or 2,400 watts, so we should have more than enough elbow room there. As long as we use about 10% of that capacity. The tree will be set in a mound secured, and concrete ballast blocks are placed on the base of the mound. The mound has the ability to hold water and will keep it fresh and watered daily. There'll be no open flames or anything per the burn ban, so we're not gonna have any kind of fire assessment or fire risk there. The tree will be approximately 20-foot tall. I've done a wind load analysis of it at 75 miles an hour. It's 20, it's about 2,000 pounds of wind loading on it. We have 5,600 pounds of ballast on the tree, so it would take approximately a 200 mile an hour wind to tip that tree over.
That's a hurricane.
And I think, yeah, I think we're gonna be losing other things.
That will be the least of our worries.
Before we do that tree. And we're gonna come by and inspect that mound's stability every three days, just to make sure everything's on the up and up, and of course, if we get a high wind forecast or advisory, then, you know, I'll run over and take a look at it. The decorations, tree, ballast, and mound will be removed by the 5th of January. The green will be free of debris upon completion by the volunteer group. And we'd like to set the tree the Sunday after Thanksgiving, Sunday the 30th, and decorating the tree on December the 6th, and tree lighting, I believe, on December the 7th. I think, I've got some of my cohorts in crime here.
Sunday, fifth.
The what?
Death.
The fifth.
From lighting.
But we're decorating it on the 6th.
No, Sunday.
Okay, my timeline's all messed up here. Sorry for the failure of communications there. And then, the total cost of the town will be really limited to the cost of the electricity for the LED lights. So thank you very much.
How does the Board feel about this proposal?
Sounds really delightful to me.
Yeah, I agree.
Somebody wanna put that in form of a motion?
I'll make that motion that we allow them to put that tree in the green.
Sure, I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posted. Carried. Thank you all the volunteers that have worked for this project.
Did you dress like Christmas on purpose? You're wearing red.
Every year.
That's nice, great. Very exciting. Lenny?
John?
Yeah, that's all, thanks.
I'm here to follow up on this. I gave a picture of it the last time I was here.
Yes, we're working on a proposal to get that squared away.
Is there anything that I ought to know?
Right now, we're working on a different, a turnaround at the bottom of that hill, and also those signs like that on a, alongside a road are very similar to posted signs that everybody's allowed to put on, on roads, main roads in the town right-of-way. So, I don't, I don't, personally, I don't see any difference than all the signs on a dirt road that would say "posted" to, once you're off the right-of-way.
But that sign says "private drive."
Oh.
Dead end, private drive.
Right. Well, we are working on a solution to this problem, but we haven't rectified it yet.
Well, problem is that sign, "private drive," is posted at least 125 feet from the owner's property line. It can't pertain to the town road.
Okay, is it on the owner's property?
It's in the right-of-way.
It's in the town right-of-way?
It's in the three-road, it's a three-road road, it's in the right-of-way.
That belongs to the town?
Belongs to the town, it's a town road. TH27.
Okay.
It has become part of a device to try and accuse me of criminal trespass.
Well, that's not anything that we can...
I'm not asking you to do anything about it, but I think that the removal of the sign would be a good idea, because it's not properly posted.
Okay, we'll continue this process and try and come up with a solution.
My problem is, it's been used as part of an attempt to make a complaint of criminal trespass against me. A video has been trumped up, and the constable has been taken in, so now I have to have a lawyer and go and deal with a criminal court.
Well, I don't believe that the sign is, is the only thing that's gonna rectify that issue.
No, it isn't, but it's an element. And it's part of a longer-running situation that's developed over the last half dozen years. As a clinical psychologist, I'm acute to something called paranoid personality disorder, and the owner has been progressively at odds with the rest of the neighborhood. I use that road. It's a dead-end road, but I use it to walk, because I'm supposed to walk for my health. And since we're on the shoulder of a hill, everything is down. If I go down, I have a bit of a hole to get up. But by walking down the Solar Park Road, walking up to the end of the Robinson Hill Road, coming back down and walking up to the beginning of the Rosses' property on Solar Park, I get in a mile. So I would not like to see that road become non-public. And to understand that in order for a road to be discontinued, there's a significant process that involves a hearing. I have not seen any indication that there's a hearing. So I would like to be kept informed of what's going on, because I would have no objection to the town putting up a sign that points out that it's a dead-end road. I think that's perfectly appropriate. But it began some years ago when the owner complained that some people ended up turning around in her door yard. This is a country. And I've seen this disorder developing since then. A paranoia regarding other people in the neighborhood. Now, I'm gonna fight it in court, I have no doubt that I'll win, because the property is not posted properly. But I would be curious if the work that's been done there to, I don't know, what do you call that?
To turn around the town trucks, so that they have an appropriate place to, to turn around to get out of that road.
So, is that part of a larger plan to throw up the road?
At this point, right now, the process hasn't begun to throw up the road.
But it would seem to me that that turnaround is a sign that some modification might be made.
It makes it more efficient for the larger trucks that we now have to turn around safely at the bottom of that road.
I understand that. I think that's a good idea. But if it's part of a larger process, I think a hearing would be appropriate.
If it's a larger, if a larger process does become, we will certainly go by all the rules that the state has set forth and do exactly what they say. If a hearing is, is what they have, we'll have a hearing to decide.
But that seems to me to be a kind of anticipation.
The process hasn't begun. There's been no hearing posted.
I know. But I'm not sure that that is not at least a harbinger of the process and is maybe legally entwined with it. I don't know. But my main concern is that sign, which I don't think is at all appropriate, and has been used as part of a scheme to entangle me in a legal process. I don't like that. So I won't belabor your time anymore, but I would appreciate being kept informed. Thanks.
Thank you, Lenny. Any announcements? Zoning administrators report?
Hi, so we're up to 41 permits already, and a lot of them have come out of this townwide reassessment. They've identified a number of buildings and shipping containers that were not permitted, so it's been an awakening experience on their front and my front as well, so wherever possible, I'm just following up and requesting permits for those properties. And that's all I have to report.
Anybody have any questions for Nancy?
Kristen, you want to get this back here?
If you would like to be the key speaker.
Are you volunteered?
You're welcome to do that.
We gave Sue the night off, so. Planning Commission, anything?
No, no, just a report.
Okay, thank you. Road foreman.
So James sent an email. They, over the last two weeks, they were preparing for shoulder install. After the paving was completed, they continued mowing and leaf blowing on the roads, fixed the washouts on Rupert Hill Road, installed risers on manhole covers, started the shoulder material install, and continued winter prep of trucks. And now, this week, and moving forward, or they, last week, they completed the shoulder material install on 153. They are currently preparing to get the trucks ready for winter. They conducted winter operations for our current snowstorm, and that's what they intend to continue to do over this week, just continue to deal with the weather. Something that wasn't included, but there was an email that went out, so James had emailed the individual from the state that was going to stripe or paint the lines on the roads on 153 after the paving was done, and an email came back from that person with the state saying that they had taken the equipment out of, or they had taken it out of the rotation. Is that right? Am I getting that right? And we might not, they might not be able to paint the lines on the roads. So I let James know that he might want to be prepared to talk to the Board tonight, depending on what, where he got today, because that email just came yesterday. So I'm not sure where, where he got with that today, but that just might need to be something that you all need to consider, if that, because the state was doing a full repaint of lines, so it was going to be covered by the state if we had just given them the heads up, but it seems like there was some communication that got missed. So if they're not able to do it, that just might be something that needs to be considered if you want the lines to be painted before winter gets into full swing, so.
So we'll, we'll wait for updates from James on that, I guess.
Yes.
All we can do at this point. Anybody have any questions or comments as far as the roads? Okay. Anything from the Sussers tonight?
Not tonight.
Town clerk? Deb?
Yep, good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Deb.
I don't really have anything to address tonight. If anybody has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer if I can.
Anybody have any questions for Deb? I guess you're off the hook, Deb. Thank you for joining us anyways, but everything's running good.
Okay, thank you. I'm back with a bounty tree.
Yes, good. Thank you. Town treasurer?
Julie's here. So there are two warrants this week. Payroll is $11,925.48, accounts payable $270,683.34, general fund $14,173.88, highway In October, the town received the following state payments. $12,000 for grants and aid FY '25, which was the Beaver Brook and Heatherington Culver Replacement Project. $1,125 towards the BIG MERP, which is the Municipal Energy Resilient Program. Grant expense $27,608.33 for the second quarter highway state aid. $972.50 for municipal portion of judicial fines. $154,753 for the fiscal year '26. Current use "hold harmless," I'm not sure what that, the "hold harmless" is, but, and some small amounts for land use change and other state payments towards property taxes. A friendly reminder that next Tuesday is the budget meeting. Julie has left comparative budget reports for wastewater, highway, and general funds in a packet for each of you. Please leave Julie a note or reach out tomorrow, Wednesday, with anything else you might wish to see ahead of next week's meeting. Last week, Julie spent some time working with Deb on land record entry training, and she compiled the full list of ordinances, policies, et cetera, from the big binder in the vault, which I know was emailed out to everybody. So that is all Julie had for a memo. The two motions that will need to be put out there tonight are for payroll warrant 26027 for $11,925.48, and accounts payable warrant 26028 for $270,683.34. And that's all for the treasurer.
Well, I can make the motion on those two warrants, on payroll warrant 26027 and accounts payable warrant 26028.
Alright, thank you.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carried. Go ahead, take a drink, and then we'll go to Bob.
I know, I'm whittling my whistle, because he's got a long report tonight.
Oh, he's got a big one.
Do you wanna hear it?
Since the bitch has done some.
Okay. So are you ready for emergency management?
Sure am.
So Bob Morlino shared that the Politt Emergency Management and Shelter Team participated in the statewide Vermont Emergency Management Exercise Binary Blizzard on October 22nd. This exercise, built on an October 2024 tabletop exercise of the same name, was designed to validate the state's emergency plans while strengthening coordination among federal, state, and local agencies in five southern counties. During the scenario, a significant early-season winter storm brought heavy winds, several feet of snow, and major ice accumulation to Vermont. The State Emergency Operations Center was fully activated with Vermont Emergency Management and statewide partners working alongside eight communities. Southern Vermont was challenged to manage back-to-back snowstorms, decreasing available resources, widespread power outages, and additional threats from freezing rain and ice. These exercises are critical for reviewing procedures, deepening partnerships, and ensuring effective communication with the State Emergency Operations Center. Politt's Emergency Management Group, Bob Morlino, Jackie Becker, Leon Corey, Ed Evans, and Deb Evans operated the Emergency Operations Center, otherwise known as the EOC, at Meadowwee Community School. At the shelter, Madeline Wentworth, Tom Van Zant, and Carol Schoenwetter registered simulated clients and prepared sleeping arrangements. The state provided two controllers to inject various situations for the team to deal with, while two evaluators observed the team's response and will document their findings of how the teams performed. We would like to thank Brooke DeBanas and the Meadowwee Community School for their continued, continued support and to the safety of the Politt community. And that is what Bob submitted.
Pretty in-depth report, but that's great.
Thorough, yes.
It's great to be ready.
Yes.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Bob.
And Jennifer emailed with nothing to share at this time from the health officer.
Facilities, looks like Tom can have the seat first.
You sure?
Oh, yeah.
Alright. Will will be here tomorrow at 10 o'clock to complete that door, and then he'll send us a bill so we can pay him. He's received a lot of compliments on that door. Good job done by a local boy, a couple boys. I also received a message from a neighbor asking me to check on a few items. The flag cross on the green, the light was not shining on the flag. I adjusted it, I think I tightened it, but I'm not quite sure. It seems to be good. Two days in a row, so I'm gonna take that as a plus that it should stay there. The second item was the lights. We have a light out over the ballot box outside, and the four lights on the porch, whether there was a timer or a switch, and I have talked to almost a half a dozen people. Does anyone else know where the switch is, or a timer?
Deb might know.
Did you contact Sue before?
Yeah, I reached out to Sue. She referred me to Karen, Deb. It was part of the conversation.
I mean, I went looking for them last year, and couldn't find a switch.
Oh, good.
So you're not, you're not the only one. Didn't you know it's a clapper, actually?
Everyone clap.
The clapper, that's what turns it on.
But we did find that there, there could be a statute, Deb researched it a little bit, about lighting the ballot box during an active voting, so that might be something we have to be concerned up to, and then also, you know, handicap accessible lighting. So those are two things that Deb's been working on for me, so she's been a part of that conversation. But if anyone comes up with a mystery box, or the timer that's downstairs, I found, doesn't have anything on it, or no electrician I can meet?
Check the back hall?
We did. Julie and I went through, we went up to auditorium, thinking that those lights came on within the last couple months, and maybe someone turned it on from the elevator door or from auditorium door, and we played with some switches and no activity.
Is there a circuit trace that we can slap on and trace it back?
Deb mentioned that maybe they were on sensors, there's no sensors on those out on the porch that I could find, other than if there's one on top, but it's under the building, so I don't recall them lights being on when I looked at it during the summer, though, during the day, so I'm thinking there's a switch that got turned on, or a timer turned them on.
It's not on a breaker by chance?
I opened the breaker box, and I didn't see anything that said "front porch."
This is silly, the only thing I can think of is recently something was just switched on to turn the furnace on, and then the lights came on soon thereafter. I know that sounds silly, but that's the only thing I can think of that...
So the red box lights up the porch, too?
Turns the furnace on and lights up the porch.
Well, I guess we could try that.
It's the, they're, you know, like, they both happened at the same time, at the same time.
There was an electrician's name that I guess worked on here that might know, Tyler Electrical?
I think they were the ones that did the, when they did the rework.
In Deb's office, yeah.
When they did the rework on the Town Hall, I think they were.
Matt Corey's a master, and he's resident, so. Matt Corey's a master, and he's resident, so.
Can you ask him to reach out to me, then?
Is he the one that's been doing some work here, helping get these?
I believe yes. They did some work at the town garage and...
Yeah. Matt's been doing that, Deb, getting the TV set up and stuff?
Yeah, well, he did it, yes, he did a little bit of the after-work for us, and so he, and he, there is a breaker box in my office in the closet, Tom. Maybe we can check that out tomorrow.
That's why I didn't look.
Did you look at that one?
No, I have not. Julie and I did not go to the breaker box in your office.
Okay, yeah, because it's in the closet, so maybe there's a mystery solved there. But yeah, I did same, I did the same thing that you did. I went in the hall, front hall, and went, tried all the switches, and couldn't find. And I just, I, I remember we went on a search, not, well, maybe it was when Jessica was looking. We were looking, we couldn't find anything, but it's got to be somewhere.
I appreciate all the eyes and ears.
I would suspect if you guys can't find it, you're going to need electrician to trace it, so that makes the most sense.
Yeah.
I have him calm down and figure it out.
What was that, Deb?
I can give Matt a call. I've got his number.
Excellent, and you got my cell number. He's welcome to reach out to me, too, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And, and then the town garage, they should, the contractor is scheduled to replace the door next week there, and I haven't told, I just learned this tonight, so that'll have to be given to James. I could text him in the morning. Town library, I learned this afternoon that David will be there next, this coming Thursday to fix that flat roof. I got thinking about it after I got off the text with him, is, what's your hours over there, and what about people walking in and out? Because that's going to be the flat roof to the front entrance.
Hours are eleven to five.
Okay.
And there's yoga at the end of five o'clock. That's Thursday. Oh, Thursday's Tuesday. Yeah.
Is there any way to maybe direct that? Uh, you know, the folks using the library to use the back ramp while he's working on that, so we don't have anybody conflict there?
Sure, is it?
What time?
I don't have a time other than Thursday.
Okay.
So usually they start their projects in the morning.
Okay.
I don't know exactly what time.
All right, we'll put on notice and, and make some signs.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, thanks.
And then, I, thanks to Julie, she made copies of three different quotes we got from Lux Brush on the painting. The town hall, the front of the building, was one quote. Second quote is on the west side of the building and the cupola, because in order to do the cupola, you need a longer lift, and you also need that longer lift on that left side of the building, so that's why they're together. And there is area in the cupola that does need to be fixed and painted. And then they also gave, the third quote is for the front porch, after they're done fixing that flat roof, and also the railing to the library in the back started to rustle a little bit, and he suggested we paint that to prevent it from rusting any farther. We have a little bit of time with those quotes. I'm glad to answer any questions, but I was thinking that for those that might not have had time to review them, we could bring it up at our next meeting, and also, we could also see what our budget meeting brings next week, and entertain what we can afford and what needs to be done. But I'm willing to answer any questions anyone has.
So I guess my question is, since I painted my own house, I have no idea how much painting normally costs. Is this how much painting normally costs, or is it extra because of the historic building?
I don't think it's, the, the first line item is because of every state building.
Uh huh. Yeah, and that's, that's not a big line item.
No.
No.
But I think the biggest challenge here is the boom, the lift.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty obvious that it costs more to do the park with the big lift.
So, but I, I, I don't have buildings painted, so I don't, I can't answer you on comparisons. But I don't even know another company to reach out to to get a comparison to.
That's what we've been running into quite often, and Lux has been doing it for us for quite a few years because nobody else.
I met with a gentleman named Travis. I think he's very professional, and I think they are, they, they seem like a good company to go with, and you guys have had them in the past, so.
I think they've been painting these buildings for probably at least ten years or more.
More, but I couldn't tell you how long he did tell me.
Right, but I know that, pretty much as long as I've been on the board, they've been basically the only people that have, have really given us quotes and, and performed what they said they would.
And all these quotes would be for them to do it in the summer of next year, early summer, when it gets warm again.
Yeah, we're past painting season.
Correct, but I just wanted to bring that up so people weren't thinking that we approved it, they were going to get done tomorrow either. For those that aren't painters.
It seems like if we wait a cycle, that, that's not going to be a big deal, and that will give us a little bit of time to, to look at our numbers and stuff, too, so.
Yep.
That's a reasonable idea to me. Is everybody else okay with that, or? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for getting all that documentation for us.
Is that it for your facilities bit?
Yep.
All right, my facility is bit. So the, the MERP grant, the Municipal Energy Resilience Program grant, I don't have a lot of report on that, except that our advisory group met today to get some updated numbers from the, from the company Archattend that we're working with. Basically, right now, we're, we're waiting to get some finalized numbers from both Efficiency Vermont and from Green Mountain Power on what kind of rebates and incentives they could offer us, because they both offer incentives for this kind of energy efficiency work. So we have to get the final numbers. In two weeks' time, so at the next select board meeting, there will be a presentation by the, by Archattend, and we hope our advisory group will also be able to come and meet and talk about it to show the numbers. There's probably going to be two different possibilities that the select board can look at, with two different kinds of work to be done. And the advisory group is going to have a suggestion, what they think would be best, but obviously it's up to the select board. And so we've asked that Archattend at that time would have for us not just the top-line numbers, but also information, which I think the select board's going to want, which will be, for each of these kinds of HVAC systems, how, what's the cost going to be to run it in electricity, and what's the lifespan of the units? Because we're going to want to know that as we go forward. If we wanted to go with a slightly more expensive upfront thing, but if it would be much cheaper to run and last a lot longer, it might be a better deal. Or if it's not that big of a difference, we might want to go with something a little less expensive. So we need to get that information so that the select board can have it. What, what we're thinking about timing-wise is that at the next select board meeting, hopefully this presentation can happen, and then the select board will want to think about it, and then maybe we can come back the next meeting and make a decision about which way we want to go. Because they're going to have to have a decision about which way we want to go before they can draw up the full plans. So that's where that's at.
Okay, that sounds like a very good direction going forward, so.
I do have a question. On that blow test, is that where the results will come back when we see this, then?
Um, they did it already, and they're, I haven't seen the results, but they're putting the results into their, into their scheme. So I can see if they can get us the results of that to look at.
They'll be part of the presentation?
Yeah, I'll ask them to do that, yeah. Use the blow door test.
Should I add that to the agenda? A presentation from them? Are you waiting to confirm that?
Um, no, we confirmed it today. They're going to be able to do the presentation for us on the evening of the, it's the twenty-fifth, I believe.
Great. Anything else under, uh, facilities?
How'd you make out with your, in the wastewater?
Wastewater, um, the heat, that, the heat pump is in, and I haven't heard confirmation if he's installed the baseboards yet. And also, I've been working with a technician to, to work on the pump station and spruce gum. Apparently that's, hasn't performed properly in a while. It's supposed to transfer between the two pumps, back and forth, but right, there's something in the control circuitry that's, that's off. And Jill was able to get me some documents that I, that I passed on to the technician, and we'll see when he can, when he's in the area, he can show up and look at it.
Did you, and were you able to find somebody to be racking for us, too, over there when they're done?
It sounds like Tom is going to do that. I haven't heard different, so, but I haven't talked to him yet, his stuff, so. I'll have to reach out to him and confirm that, that he'll be able to touch that up stuff for us.
Thanks.
But that's, that's the way it sounded. I was led to believe that, so, I'll follow through on that. That's it, at the wastewater, I guess, of...
She, Jill, just emailed the regular reports. Oh.
Yeah.
Talking about the...
I did see that she has... Oh, here's, there's a message just come, Eric just had a question. The, the pump station in West Pollet, in what they call spruce gum, is, it has an issue with the control circuitry. It's not switching between the pumps correctly, but I have a technician coming to, to evaluate that and determine what it is. It's a, it's a relay system, not a modern logic system, so you have to find somebody that can go back and evaluate a relay system. It's not, not anybody's forte as much anymore, so. But I have, I have a contact of somebody that I, that I've worked with before that's very capable, and, and he's going to look at it in the near future. Did that answer your question, Eric, or?
He said thank you.
And she did, I see that there's a round of yearly tests that have to come up, and, and she's reached out to the people that perform those tests to, I guess I can't see that, what it is, took, set some, did, did you get copied on that, through or not?
Yeah, I think I did. I think I just got the one from the seventh. For just the record files.
Oh, here it is, right here. Request to order. Order confirmation. Time again to order the pH and settleable solids proficiency test kits for the West Pollet wastewater treatment, so. So it looks like all that has been order confirmation right here. So she's got all those yearly, yearly test kits ordered, and that's, and then just a regular, all the regular reports are, have been submitted. And other than that, I believe everything is, is okay. There's still some issues with the generator, the automatic transfer on the generator, but with Tom being close, he can go down and, and switch it manually, so we're still trying to figure that out, or if we have to get a new one, it's a very expensive transfer switch, and it has to come from Kinsley Products, which is down below Albany, and, and they tag you like an extra seven-hundred-and-fifty bucks or something like that, just because we're out of their service area. So it's, it's quite a ripoff, but nobody locally handles the three-phase transfer switches, so. And other than that, that's about all I've heard from there.
Have you talked to Glenn Loplin?
Yeah, but not about that.
Because he did our three-phase in the quarry.
But I'll, I'll talk with you later on that. Meadowwee School Board, anything from Meadowwee School Board? Nothing. Anything from the Pollet Public Library tonight?
We had our meeting last week, and we approved some hiring documents, so we're moving that process forward. We've just ended, or we're ending next week a robotics program, which has been really successful, and we've gotten some donations, and we're really thankful for that. It's been really popular. And we have set up a collection box for donations to the food pantry. Just wanted to put the word out, in case you can't get to the food pantry on time, we are collecting things, and we'll get that to them. And then I have some questions for the select board, three questions, which are not terrible, but first is, I was wondering if you have any guidelines for thermostat settings? Is there like an energy kind of policy or anything along those lines? We're just kind of curious about that.
We do not.
Okay.
Nothing that we've ever really, everybody just kind of tuned their own.
We just wanted to be mindful of the, the energy usage, and so, okay. Well, we're going with like lower, if we can, for the winter.
I, I don't know, we've always kind of, everybody's kind of been tuned it to...
Right.
To a reasonable level, and we haven't seemed to have any major problems as far as excessive use of fuel or anything.
Yeah, ours seems to fluctuate, but we, okay, we just wanted to be mindful of that. The second is that we have rekeyed the building, and I was wondering if the town, since it's a town building, should get a key?
I think Deb should definitely have one, right?
And maybe Bob, if, or emergency management? I know I was in touch with him over the summer.
There should be, there should be keys for the fire department, too.
Right, okay. It's not on our list, so I was just wondering. So would give one to Deb?
Yes, I think that would be a good idea.
And then would, would, for emergency, would that go to Deb, or just, or another key?
Emergency, you should talk to Jonathan Weiss.
Oh, okay, just for John.
The fire chief, so that he, he knows. I, I don't, I'm not familiar with it. At one point, we were going to have a box, a emergency box, but maybe they just have the keys on the fire truck or something like that, whatever, whatever he feels would be the, the most effective way.
Okay. And then the last question, and I will have some more information to the board, but we have lost our, our cleaner for the library, and we were wondering if the select board would put, put out a, a request for a cleaner, continue to hire somebody?
In our normal, in our normal advertisement?
I think so. I don't know, I can, I can put together more of a proposal to you, but I've been in touch with Julie about that.
We usually put it on the website and...
Yeah, Deb puts it on Facebook.
Okay. So I, I'll email and ask for that.
Put up a little flyer on the window and...
Right. But we were just asking, wanting the, the select board to pick that up again.
Whatever, whatever avenues are that we usually generally use, you're welcome to as a saying. Without some, she can contact with you and...
Yeah, well, is it different than the town hall? Is it the same person that tends to the town hall?
The person who tends to the town hall will not tend to the library anymore.
Right, so we, and we did, yes.
So I think the library could reach out to the, do you have the web coordinator's information? Sean, Rock?
Oh, yep.
Yeah, because we usually just post on the website, and then Deb will post on the social media channels.
And it, but it's, it is, has been paid for by the select board because, so that's what we're asking for the...
The same, though, I mean, the library handles all of their own hiring. So if it would be, I mean, if you, I think that, you can correct me if I'm speaking out of turn, but I think that the library would tend to it as they would hiring an internal position, and then bring it to the board once you've found candidates, and then maybe would be able to propose the position that you're looking to hire and the rate.
Okay.
I would think, right?
Yes, yes, that would, that would be the, that would be the best, their best course, I thi, I feel.
Because I, I know that we, I know that we apportioned the money last year for the library to use for, for paying employees, but would this employee be, because they're cleaning, not like working at the library? They would be a town employee, right? They would be a town employee, right?
We'll have to talk to Julie and find out how that was all-
Yeah.
Split up.
Yeah, okay, I was talking to her, so she, she didn't say that that was, I think, uh-
Cause I'm pretty certain whoever was cleaning all the buildings, the town was just paying for and was a town employee.
Right, it wasn't part of the library.
Now it's gonna be split up, okay.
Okay. Thanks.
I think we can work through that, but yeah, if you, we can advertise and, and then come up with a viable candidate and, and move forward that way.
Alright.
Anything else from the library? Anybody having questions for the library? Okay. Older unfinished business?
Oh, um, well, ordinance, yeah, well, I have, I have the stuff about the waste burning ordinance. Um, I didn't really do too much looking into the list of ordinances that Julie sent us, but I can give you the information. I did email this yesterday. I went and back and looked at, cause I attended a training on ordinances, so I went back and looked through all the materials that they sent. And I looked, I went to VLCT and looked at their stuff. So ordinance adoption is actually easier than adopting the town plan or the bylaws. And I wrote here what it is, and I'll just read this. So the select board would vote to adopt an ordinance at a regularly-warned select board meeting. So unlike with the town plan, we don't have to make a special warning ahead of time. We just have to put it on the agenda. So if we wanted to look at it, say, next meeting, we would put waste burning ordinance on the agenda, and then anybody from the town who wanted to speak to that could show up. Once the select board votes to adopt an ordinance, it has to be entered into the minutes, both that we voted on it and the text of the ordinance, and it needs to be posted five places around town. And then within 14 days, the ordinance has to be published in the newspaper, whatever our newspaper record is, which is Rutland Herald. And there is specific info that has to go in that publication. And there's a handy little ordinance notice sheet that I have here that tells, and Deb could take care of that for us. It tells what has to go in the newspaper. And it does have to also say then that voters can do a petition if they don't want the ordinance, like with most things. Um, if a petition is received by the amount of voters saying they don't want the ordinance, then there's some other stuff that we would have to do. But if no voter petition is received, the ordinance becomes law 60 days after we were to vote on it. So if we did wanna do a waste burning ordinance and we did vote on it, you know, sometime in the next month, it would be 60 days before it would go into effect. And then the ordinance, once, has to be recorded by the town clerk in the town records. So that's the, that's the, what has to happen with any ordinance. And then since we were talking in particular because of issues we've had with waste burning, um, I found a waste burning ordinance which was put out by the Department of Environmental Conservation. They're the, yeah, and they're the ones, thanks for printing that off for me. They're the ones who, um, do issue some burning, um, what do you call them? Permits for burning. And so this one that I set here is basically, um, it mirrors what the state law is. It pretty much is just exactly what the state law is, except put as a town law so that we could enforce it. And the gist of it is that if people wanna open burn natural wood or non-woody vegetation, they have to get a permit to kindle fire from the town forest fire warden. And, but that they can't burn waste. Um, and I'll let you guys read through it over, so it's, basically the gist of it is just this bit right here, which is what they can and can't burn, which is pretty much, you can only burn natural wood. And it defines in here what natural wood is, so people don't get away with like saying this is natural wood and it's not natural wood. Um, and then, and then it gives, um, a penalty and waiver fee for the first, second, and third, fourth offenses. And then it would say here who could enforce it. In the, um, in this sample one, it says the select board can designate any combination of the following persons as enforcement personnel. And it just lists off members of the select board, the town health officer, the town attorney, the town constable. We could decide when we wrote such a, if we did such an ordinance, we could decide who was our enforcement personnel. So if we did wanna go with a, such an ordinance, I would suggest this as the like first draft that we would go with. And how I would want to move ahead with this would be, I would want to get with John Weiss and talk to him because he's our fire chief here in Polat, and just double check that the language in this would make sense to him as a fire professional. And who's, do we know who our forest fire warden is?
It was Dale Decker.
Was it Dale Decker? So I might also wanna try to get with him to see if this would make sense also. But, yeah, I, I would think that if we did wanna move ahead with this, those would be the next good steps, and then if I was able to talk to both of them and see if there were any adjustments we would wanna make, the things the select board would really need to decide on would be if we think that the, um, that the fines listed in here make sense, or if we would want them to be different, and also who we would want to be the enforcement personnel. So that's my, that's my update on that ordinance.
Red, that, that looked pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I like it because it's not too long and it basically just, it's pretty clear. You can burn, you can burn woody stuff if you get a permit, you can't burn trash. That's pretty much it.
I know when we talked about doing ordinance and Julie sent all them other ones to us, I think us trying to put them all in one group is not gonna be feasible.
It's gonna get dragged out too much and not dealt with, especially since you've enlightened us on the process is more streamlined than we expected.
Yeah, and I don't think that we necessarily have to update the other ordinances at this time. It doesn't seem like it would be easier or harder to update them later if we decide we wanna update them.
I think Julie did, um, a lot of great work of putting them all digitally, so now they're all, instead of, they're, you know, in the binder, obviously, but now you have a list of all of them and when they've most recently been reviewed, which some of them haven't been looked at since like the seventies. But I think that Julie's thought, when her and I were talking about it, was the idea of just at least giving you all the opportunity to see what's there and then see if there's anything that you might, you might like to revisit. And then kind of in line with that whole concept of like coming up with a five-year plan or something, just to figure out where your priorities are, but.
I almost think you're gonna need a committee to go through them.
Yeah, there's quite a bit.
But some of them are pretty ancient.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
But I really do appreciate the summary and it was all pretty much a couple pages, we could read it. So that was a lot of research to get it on.
Yeah, she did a lot of work on that.
So we appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Well, do you want to, um, is this something that you'd like to have warned at the next meeting, or do you think it might take a couple rotations to?
I would like, if Jessica's willing to talk to the fire warden and the fire chief, and then bring it back, and then we could keep going and progress. Excuse me, the thing, right now, we have issues with people burning trash. And unlike some of the other ideas that have come up for ordinance, this, this is very clear cut. Where, where there's, there's really no room for interpretation of this ordinance.
And the nice thing that I like about this sample ordinance is it just, it exactly mirrors what the state law is. So it's not like it's gonna surprise anybody that this is the law.
Right, as it stands now, we have to get a, a burn permit if there's not snow on the ground.
Right.
So the, there's no issues with the cur, the way it currently is, it's just with the trash. Is that?
Right.
That's gonna be the only thing that changes?
Yes. And, and you can, and even, when you had the burn permit, you could only burn what they outline as burnable materials, which is-
Yeah.
Which is brush and stumps.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, it lists here the pallets and skids, lumber, trees and brush, is the natural wood.
Like, like no plywood, asthrenite, or painted?
No plywood, no particle board, no fiber board or press board.
Which that's the current.
That's the current one, yeah. So the, basically, this is exactly the same as the current one. It's just what it would allow us to do then would be for our local people to write somebody up if they burned the trash, rather than having to wait for the state to come and do their thing. And then they don't come. When someone's burning trash.
That's a big hurdle for Jennifer.
Yeah, that's been the difficulty that we've heard from Jennifer.
So would that change the ability to be able to burn all the acceptable material in the winter? If we have snow, you wouldn't need a permit?
I don't, I still-
We would just wanna make sure that folks wouldn't have to get a permit if there's snow on the ground in the wintertime to burn a brush pile.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I can, let me, let me write that down, and I can double check when I'm talking to, when I'm talking to our, our fire warden and our fire chief, I can ask about that. So it's that now, if snow's on the ground, no permits required?
For the-
Right.
For what?
For the approved-
Right.
For the approved product.
For like brush and stuff.
Correct.
Okay.
The approved materials.
Right. Yeah, so we just wanna make sure that this is the same.
Yeah.
I'll look into that.
And is there any wording for campfire?
I think there is, yeah, I think there's wording for campfire. Um, let's see. Let me look at that. Yep, um, it shall not apply to-
Burning a natural wood.
Burning natural wood in a furnace or other enclosed container to produce heat. And there's one, there was something in here that was about for fun either, yes. The festive celebrations. Yeah. I think it's... I'll, I'll, I'll make, I'll jot that down to make sure that includes campfires as well. I thought I saw that there. Campfires, okay, as well. Yep. I will double check this. Cause we would want that to be something you could do, as long as there's not a burn ban.
It's Lars, Lars Lund is still the state. The state guy that has control over all that, the forest fire wardens.
Who is?
Lars Lund that lives up on Town Hill.
Okay, I don't know him.
I believe he's in the fire department, too.
Okay, so if I talk to John, John will know.
John will know, but I, I believe he's the, he's the, he's the state guy that manages all the forest fire warrants and stuff like that.
Yeah.
We, I think, Rich, your question is a valid question, and I do believe we gotta be careful because it's under state permit of kindle fire on that. Is what they wanna review.
Yep. So we'll-
So that, that needs to be asked by our-
Yep, that, I'll run that past.
Change.
Yep, and if we, if we need to change it, so it's, it just specifically calls out campfires as no permit needed, that we can- That's why we're asking that. We wanna make sure that it fits with what we want and not what we don't want.
Well, our objective is the trash.
Our objective is the trash.
Ready?
Yep.
Thanks for looking into that.
Sure, no problem. I'll get with John. So that's it, that's it for my ordinance stuff.
That's it for, so, so you're gonna follow through with a few more questions?
I'll follow through with these questions that you brought to me. And, um, I'll get with our fire chief and fire warden and we'll, um, with any changes, like make another draft of it to make sure that it covers campfires and the snow on ground bit. And then we'll have another draft to look at in two weeks.
Okay. Any other older unfinished business? Any new business? Ed?
I have a correction.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
Oh, the microphone. Make sure that everybody unpacked in the area.
Debbie got it trained.
Uh, I have a correction to the planning commission report.
Uh-huh.
Uh, there was something that came up. Linda, who is our delegate to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission for transportation issues, has decided that she wants to step down around December, and it was recommended that maybe you guys could ask Jimmy if he wanted to take that.
Okay.
That, uh-
If he would be the delegate for the transportation portion of the-
Yeah, and one of the reasons was, was Linda was, uh, she was kind of lost in her environment, quite frankly, and she, and she said, I have no idea what most of these folks are talking about when we're in those meetings.
Lenny?
I apologize.
No, that's fine.
It works better, it works much better for the town if the same person is a delegate to the regional planning commission as the regional transportation commission. Because issues often overlap. And they both only have one meeting a month.
So it's been told to us that most of the people on the transportation committee, or generally the town super, have, have to be the-
No.
No.
They're totally independent commissions, okay, that you don't have to-
We'll put it out there, she wants to, oh, Linda has her hand up. Go ahead, Linda.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, I feel, um, I know transportation person can't really contribute to that group. And, um, you know, it's a good group, I mean, I know it a lot. And I just felt that, you know, somebody like Jake, who does the roads, I think he'd get a lot out of it, and he could contribute much more.
Okay.
One, and so I'd like to change, but I'm willing to stay on until we find somebody. But I think just by suitable, so that, and I can get a position.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, Linda.
Okay, thanks.
I filled both roles for close to 15 years.
Mm-hmm.
And only quit when I got sick. And it, the issues dovetail.
Okay.
And the procedures are similar. It's much easier if one is in touch with both sides.
Well, right now, we're, we're looking for somebody that'll fill the void, so to have someone to fill the void is better than having someone in both voids, so.
I understand, I'm just-
We'll work at trying to come up with a new solution of someone that can take over for that, and we'll check with Jim and see if he's interested.
And so you may find that the situation won't develop again if you do that.
Thank you. Any old other new business?
Um, so the Rutland Regional Planning Commission's Regional Emergency Management Committee reappointment form has come up, and Bob Marlino and John Weiss are volunteering to be reappointed, so that just needs to be signed.
Somebody make a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post carried. Thank you, gentlemen, for doing that. And the other new business? Public comment? Anybody have anybody, anything for public comment? Where's Frank tonight?
Thanks for approving the three.
I think it's exciting.
In that case, I move that we enter executive session to discuss confidential attorney-client communications made for providing professional legal services to the body.
I'll second that.
Nancy Marlino, would you join us, please?
Yes.